The TC Freeze, located in Monazuma, Indiana. We offer over thirty-two soft-serve flavors of creamy delicious ice cream. Ham-breaded Pork Tenderloin. Famous Homemade Pony Sauce. And don't forget our roasted Chicken. Open Tuesday through Sunday, ten thirty to nine thirty. To place an order, call seven six five two four five two eight eight seven. We appreciate your business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, it's fine. It's been two or three weeks ago.
He gives you any grease, Barb?
No, no, he might reflex.
Oh, no. I go to instant baby mode. Fetal position. So I'll make a motion to pass the March twelfth meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
No corrections.
Any corrections, if you can see? I don't see anything. Nope. What is the name? Alright, any public comment? No? Okay. Alright, we'll start with old business. I know that Natalie has, um... Sent the check... Or... Or pay apps number two to be sent out. We had a meeting last week with, um... Steve Shannon and B and T. Were here to discuss the final... Concerns that we have. Let's see, what we talk about here?
I was gonna say, can we ask about that now, or is that later in reports?
What?
Is that now, we can ask about that meeting, or is that later in reports?
Well, let's do that in new business. But in here, it's gotten Gary... Is concerned about the, well... When we go in there, I guess we could talk about that, 'cause he's talking about... When we shut down the water to fix those leaks.
Which that's what they've repaired.
Yeah.
We've already had that issue, and that's what caused the three valve...
Yeah.
That's up so.
Oh, that... Oh, the Gary Herb thing. They, they did go in, and he, the plumber flushed out their pipes. And there was some major sludge in there. So, he thought, Gary thought that when they do get the bill from the plumber, That we should probably maybe split with them. Since it probably was an issue caused from the shutdown. You know, price settled, and I don't know. But that's something we need to decide. Whether you guys think that would be... You know, fair, or if we should let them pay for it themselves. What is, what's, what's your opinion on that?
I mean, this is the same one from last meeting, right?
Yeah.
I mean, he had pretty much new pipes and stuff in there.
Yeah, he had all new...
Yeah, I, I'm good with splitting, that's just my opinion, but I, yeah.
Yeah, and I thought we already, I thought we decided that last...
I think we cost it. We cost the whole thing, you know?
But like, he just decided to split the bill, flying with you guys.
Yeah, I think we should.
Somebody wanna make a motion in that?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to split that plumbing bill.
And I'll second.
Okay. I'm second. Okay. Alright, town truck. We have raft and seat covers. I don't know if they've got a light yet or not. See if I know.
You know if they've ordered the light for the truck yet?
Mike's not got it with me. I've talked to him a couple times, but he hasn't...
Hasn't seen it. I understand there's a scratch on our truck.
On the, on the new one?
Yeah.
On the pickup?
Yeah.
Oh, I have no idea.
I know. I haven't looked at it yet, though.
When did this scratch happen? Do we know?
I don't know. I've just heard that there was a scratch. I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody about it. It possibly could be buffed out, you know, but let's see. Just found out about that this week, so... Meeting, we did have the meeting Tuesday, March nineteenth. The construction road project in completion. So Ken, you know more about that, don't you?
What's that?
The, the road meeting?
Yes, the one we met up down here? Yes. So what we did was, we walked around, and they actually spray painted the spots we had, 'cause you know, the agreed spots That they are gonna come in and replace. One thing that they're gonna do is, when they have the, uh... I don't know the exact name of it, but you know, milling machine for the, to mill it down. 'Cause they're gonna take it all the way down where that hump is, you know, they're just gonna take it all, all the way down. Like they should.
There by the civic center, or?
Well, no, down farther. But at the civic center, they're actually going to... That's like really hard-packed gravel, you know, from the road over to the civic center. So they're gonna come and bring that milling machine in there. And lower all that down. And then, we, uh, discussed, you know, if we had to, that we can bring a small little somethings to fill in that one little area. But just with everybody looking at it, it was like, best to have more runoff in that area. So... But they're gonna, so, uh... Guy from HWC, my mind is on blank. He was supposed to write up... What's that?
Eric?
No. The guy that's always driving around in the truck with his light. Yeah.
Shepherd, no?
Yeah, Ron Shepherd. So he was supposed to write up the agreed everything, and send it out to everybody. He has not yet, so...
Okay.
I was gonna send an email, actually this morning, and I forgot, but I'll send that email tomorrow. Because, and they, they were supposed to take care of all this work in the month of April. So, and then, we're gonna have town representatives there. They're supposed to contact us a few days beforehand, so we can be there while it's happening, you know, so...
So, are they talking about going right up to the sidewalk with blacktop there by the civic center?
No.
No, just kinda...
Yeah, just grading it, yeah. I don't know if you've ever really looked at it. I never really looked at it till that meeting. But it raises up, and it's flat, but it's like higher than the road. So we're gonna grade it all down, and get the water...
That way it's not draining on the sidewalk and all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the one that's gonna like, when they come in town, or it comes in town, and it's so lumpy there?
Yeah.
They're gonna take care of it?
Yeah. And then he's gonna go back farther on the approaches. If he has, if he ever drive by there, we took like orange spray paint, just so everybody was in agreement, we're gonna go from here. So... So it's all marked on the roads and...
Yeah, I think they just needed to use more asphalt, and just, you know, kinda... Stretched it to...
But you can't really, you know, stick it on top of it, you know, so let's, we just agreed that, you know, you're milling it all the way down to nothing's zoom. So that's what's gonna happen. He wasn't argumentative about it, he was...
Good, good. And hopefully that will really base the noise. Apparently the hot pack's ready to go, 'cause they've been working on here in town.
I've seen that they get up here for the church today, so... Yeah, I don't know when they're, I haven't talked to anybody, I don't know when they're bringing the final layer, but...
I think there's, there's gonna need another coat there, and on...
Central.
Si, um, definitely central. Maybe two there, 'cause they went down pretty deep there. And Miller Street, Miller Street's another one. But I think they got Jim Chaney's driveway done today. It looks finished to me, but I didn't drive over it. So that's good. They're getting really close.
Now, one thing, see Natalie and I, I see, was that meeting, you know, the meeting for the roads up here. We went around and looked at this other project, and you know, the house, right where the water comes out into the ditch. You know, that... I don't even know what road this is. That one that's, you know, where it comes out into the ditch.
Oh, okay.
You know, was that Miller?
Yeah.
Yeah, so... Whoever was grading, they brought a dump, or a, uh... A concrete truck and backed down the alley right there, which is a driveway. They used that as a driveway, well, they packed it down real deep. So, they came back with the skid steer, and they fixed it all. But when they did, they hit the fence on the left side.
Yeah, they know that was part of, they talked about that in the meeting. They know that they have to fix that.
I seen that engineer out there, so Natalie, I seen that, whatever that, the guy that's over everything, so...
Yeah, they talked about that, our, in our meeting.
Okay, okay.
That they knew they had to repair the fence.
Nah, I haven't been by to see if it's been fixed or not.
I don't think they mentioned that, did they?
In our, yeah.
Oh, okay. So they're gonna fix that?
And it's not a big, to me, it's not...
But still, it's...
Yeah, they got that little frickin' wiener dog that tries to escape right there.
They're good at that.
We don't wanna be...
Aw, yeah.
Anybody's dog get hurt, or escape. We have enough escaped dogs in town.
Just wandering around.
I haven't noticed too many dogs lately, actually. Have you had any?
Got enough cats.
Oh, we do have a lot of cats. Okay.
What is going off the valves, nothing, I guess.
Okay.
I don't know if that's a new business, or, I don't know.
I talked to Gary quite a bit about that. And then we talked to, um, Steve Shannon, he was at that meeting. And they're supposed to be coming up with a price for that, and we're hoping... That they can fix them, and that it will be, you know, part of our contingency plan, we'll be able to pay for that. 'Cause what we're gonna have to do is shut down the water in the whole town to do that. And Gary was thinking, maybe it could be done at night. You know, everything be ready to go, and then they would have...
When you're saying at night, like, late at night, or?
Yeah, like ten.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And have it, you know...
Time and water's not really being used all along.
Two or three crews here at a time, and then get it done. That way, we don't have to worry about the water tower draining, the school, oh, you know, draining out, and that, so... But I have not heard that on that.
So by shutting off to the whole town, then they're not gonna have to worry about closing any other valves? 'Cause I know that was a concern, having to shut off another valve, and then that one started leaking.
If we start opening more valves, we might be running into the same thing.
Yeah.
Nose breaking, and...
So is that why they're just shutting the water just off, then?
Yeah.
I guess, is that...
That's the way I took it.
Okay, makes, yeah.
Like Gary was gonna talk to B and T. I think Bobby, B and T, and get that all... Soon as we know how much it costs, we're, you know, we wanna get it done as soon as possible, so we can move on. It looks like all they've got to do, other than fix those valves, and put another layer or two of asphalt, Is do the grass seeding and stuff around town. We did have a problem with one of the houses in Maple Street, when we had that rain, a couple weeks ago, that really hard rain. Their, her yard was still full of water, and that was one of the reasons why we did the storm plan for that reason, Because of the water and the subdivision. So, I told them they needed to address that, and they did do that today. They put in new drainage under her driveway, a new pipe under her driveway. Dug out the driveway, uh, put it, the rock back. Dug out their yard, sloped it to a ditch. And I'm hoping that takes care of that. Now, we'll see. It's supposed to rain again this week, so we'll see how it goes.
One of those rains, I don't remember which one off the top of my head, but a week or two ago, After it rained like an hour later, I drove by over to the ditch.
Yeah.
And the man, I'm telling you what, it was coming out.
Was it?
Yes, and like, I was actually surprised on how much was actually coming out. Which was a good thing, but...
That hard rain. Behind here and the, uh, firehouse.
Yeah, it was going...
Yeah, it was a lake.
Oh, well, it wasn't now.
You couldn't even... Comars were like, like, well, they're, we're not open. There's no way they could get a car in that.
That'll probably be the next thing we're gonna have to resolve with that, if we can, is...
Where's that at?
Right out here in this driveway.
Yeah, these...
It was almost solid water, the whole parking area out there.
Well, I was, 'cause I was thinking...
Now, the firehouse...
Take it directly across, and maybe like, I don't know, it was...
We've got a, we've got a dry well down on that end by the dumpster.
Okay.
And we've got ours pitched, so it does that. Because after this road got done, the way they raised the road and everything, and the way the road was done, Water would, when it rained real hard, it would run in the back of the firehouse. And it was washing out underneath concrete. We had to have part of the floor cut up, and backfilled, and put some more concrete in, poured another slab inside the firehouse.
Maybe that's what we need out here, then.
So, that's why, when that gathers up down there, you notice that that drive's all sloped. So it's sloped in, then it's sloped from the road that way.
Yeah. Well, there's a drain here, but it, it must not...
Well, when it rains, like it did the other day, hard and fast like that...
Yeah.
There was nothing.
We have our own little pond out behind the firehouse, but usually within a few hours, it's gone.
Right. Okay. So hopefully, let me check and see if I got an email from Steve Shannon.
I think there's something like a snoring, doesn't it?
That computer. Sounds like somebody's snoring. While you're looking at that, we'll go, uh, cemetery graffiti, we get that headstone cleaned. If, I know we got five hundred dollars, are we still waiting on that?
Oh, yeah, we're... I thought maybe we could try it ourselves first, before we have professional time.
Okay, yeah.
I think it's limestone, so I'm thinking that maybe we could try... Somebody told me that, um, quarry, like pool quarry, will clean limestone. I don't know about paint, but it might brighten it up enough, and it's not...
Yeah, maybe we'll research, 'cause that's also super old, and we don't wanna ruin somebody's...
It is. Yeah.
I don't think we've done anything with the town doors, the door either.
The what? Oh, no. Ken, did you look for any doors?
I didn't look at them. I need to look at them. I totally forgot about it. I apologize. Make myself a note right here.
Alright.
Better yet, I'm gonna write here.
We do have somebody mowing the cemetery. I haven't personally had any complaints about cleanup. Mike said there was a few people unhappy about cleaning up, moving some of their stuff, or moving it. But it happens the same time every year. I think, if you wanna know, by now.
I think we always get plenty notice, too.
Well, we do, but apparently nobody, not everybody gets the Rockville newspaper, and not everybody has Facebook.
Well, that's not our prob, problem.
Yeah, so... There she is.
About time.
I missed the last track, and I was, uh, not missing this one.
Any other old business? That was about it, on old business.
Well, I expect that I do have a meeting on Thursday with the, um, art salienna and an artist. I'm gonna be taking pictures, and that's for the mural down there, and we're hopefully Get that step taken care of, and then the grant can be processed, and so hopefully, within the next meeting or two, we'll have a Grant and go forward with it.
Do we need to prep that space, or will they do all that?
Uh, I'm gonna be finding all that out.
Okay. I wondered if there was... We have, the paint that's on there now is a base coat.
Yeah.
But it probably could use another one.
Yeah, it was like a block primer coat.
Yeah.
Sorry, I have to print something out for you guys to approve really quick. And I print bills, I was waiting on an invoice for the procedure.
Okay. Should we start on new business, Natalie, or do you have any old business?
Um, I don't think I have any old business.
We've talked about, um, Gary Herb's, um, plumbing issue, and we've talked about the, um... Roads and the stormwater.
Okay.
One thing I've not seen is that email from Ron Shepherd. You haven't seen any, have you, Natalie?
I have not seen anything.
'Cause he was gonna like...
Nothing.
Yeah.
I'm down.
Yep, yep.
Face to face with Ron.
Did anybody get a chance to look at the, the new ordinance that we're thinking about doing for stricter guidelines on, You know, properties? 'Cause, to be true, I did not get to look at it.
I did not. Since I've been gone, I did not.
I have been kinda busy, so, um...
Did we send that to...
No, and I did not send this to Scott either, but I will, now that I'm back and I'm caught up.
She's been...
On vacation.
Traveling. Natalie, she's on a journey. She said over in Europe, all the properties look fantastic.
I didn't say that, but...
Well, you said everything was clean and neat.
I do feel as though there was a lot of pride taken, but they have a lot of history, too.
Right.
So...
Speaking of stuff, what's that, the house behind, uh, JT's there? They have furniture along the side of the road, and...
Paris, south of France and Barcelona.
I don't understand, set that out there the other day.
I know Paris was there, because I've been there.
I don't come downtown every day. When I go to work, I go that way.
It was full, I mean, it was full of stuff. And then I think there's still a wicker, chairs and a wicker...
Oh, okay.
Tuch and something or other out there.
This is a disbursement request from, this is from The loan part of the
Stormwater.
Stormwater project. So this is from the SRF loan, this is HWC's newest bill, um... Twenty-two thousand two fifteen forty-eight. So, um... You guys just have to make a motion to approve that bill tonight, and then that gets submitted to payment for SRF, And then SRF pays them directly. Derek Rush writes those checks, so you just have to approve that tonight. I was waiting for that from Christie, and yeah, you're, you've already signed that, Carol.
Okay. Yeah, I see that.
But just make a motion and record that.
Okay. Everybody wanna take a look at it real quick, and then make a motion?
It's for, most of it's probably for Johnny Roselli, the, uh, inspector, construction inspector. I think that's what his title is.
Is that what he is? Inspector?
Roselli's an inspector, Shannon's an engineer.
Okay.
Roselli's the one that sits in his truck.
That's where we want it.
Speaking of truck...
Yeah.
What happened to the truck?
Our truck?
Yeah.
Yeah, I told him there's a scratch on the truck, by the way.
It was just a scratch, or is it a...
You guys can look at it.
Yeah, we can go look at it if you want.
It's a ding or a scratch.
I'll break it out, somebody's pay.
Put one a ding and a scratch.
Is there a ding?
I thought, is it a, or is it a scratch?
Half the bumper?
No, the bumper issue was a while back then.
Yeah, that was like, two weeks after we had it.
Bumper got squished.
Somebody either backed into it?
We're gonna have to start a side of the truck out. Time clocks, and you have a punch card with the truck.
The truck is no longer allowed to go home and spend the night with anybody.
Yeah, stay a square.
If they need a truck, the old trucks there for now.
That's what, let me ask you this.
Or they have their own truck.
Hey, I know you guys are talking about this, I need to print something, but No one is dragging that old truck. Do we need to keep that truck? Do we need to continue to secure that truck? We have two other dump trucks, and that truck, and the new truck. Just food for thought.
Is that the only truck we use to spray with?
That sprayer can go in anything.
Okay.
That sprayer's on a pallet, it gets forked in the back of the truck. So, it, yeah.
So, okay, well this...
Yes, I will make a motion to approve selling the truck. The old truck, that is.
I'll second it.
I mean, if we didn't have the other trucks, it would be different, but we do have the other truck.
Well, like you said, it hasn't been touched since we got the new truck, so...
No, they moved the...
I'll also make a motion to approve paying that bill.
Somebody else second it, that's a lot of money.
I'll second the twenty-two thousand two fifteen drill by HWC.
I think it's already part of the money that we've guaranteed them.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No. All in favor of selling the old truck?
Aye.
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 Any nays?
So how are we gonna go through the selling process? What are we gonna, come up with a dollar amount, or?
I'll have to find out how to sell it. Yeah, yeah, I think we have to take bids. It does have the snowplow and stuff with it too, so I'll have to actually figure that part out. Cause it has a nice snowplow with it too.
So when you're saying take bids, I mean, we can't just flat come up with a dollar amount?
I don't think so.
Speaking of spraying. We had talked about that before, mosquito spraying. Some towns don't spray.
Yeah, a lot of towns don't spray. Rockville's never sprayed.
Well, I was wondering, do we need to continue that spraying? Cause we. It's hard to find somebody that's licensed to do that.
I just see a tremendous difference in my neck of the woods when we spray. I, I legit do. But I'm outside a tremendous amount too.
But you're next to the branch.
Yeah, but it helps. I'm just.
I think it does help too.
It definitely helps.
Guys have a lot more woods around.
Ah, there's some of those. Lot more spare tires in people's yards or something.
Yeah. Um, I mean, a lot of water pools when it rains and stuff. I mean. I, well, I know the trail now has helped with a lot of that, cause that bed used to.
Yeah.
I mean, like it is by us. It's, it's, that's.
And I think since they've worked on that. The southern end of it, they've done some, and it's draining a lot better through there, so. Cause it used to pool up.
Yeah, really now with our grain project and hopefully, yeah. Maybe a couple of years, we really won't have to. Who knows? Like I told Natalie, if I have to be certified to be able to spray, I will. I don't care.
Okay, for the pesticide license, here's your bills. I was trying to get payout number three from B and T, but it's not ready yet. So that's why we did. To get your spray license, somebody has to pass the core licensing test first, then the mosquito portion of the test. There's a class at Purdue. They offer one mosquito class per year. It is in the fall and. So you can't hardly ever get into that class. And, um. The core class, they offer several of those. You can also do some online stuff and just go take the test. You can do the test at IB Tech in Taro. Through the Metro Institute portal. That's where Jace took the test. And so you have to have the corp and the mosquito in order to be licensed to spray. Now, there's weird laws governing pesticide applications and things like that and Nick Clark, Nick from Clark. Mosquito that sells us the spray can give us the rundown on the different things like that. But we sprayed after Tony left, because Tony was licensed, so we sprayed under Justin's license. And, um, which is, was legal. For, for Justin to spray for the town, but he didn't charge the town. If he had charged the town, it would have been a conflict of interest since I would be the ones writing the check. So he did it on a volunteer basis, but then. Somebody called us in and reported it and it was like this vague thing and then. We had an inspector come down and Nick Clark shut him down. It was just kind of a hot mess. So we really do need to have a business staff here again, so.
That's where we are.
I mean, surely more than just Purdue offers that mosquito thing, don't they?
Um, it all goes through, it all goes through the Purdue pesticide office. Um, I don't know about. There may be an online class for licensing. I can look, um, but. You can get the book. I have the book and go take the test yourself. At Purdue, which is what, that's what Jace did. I sent him once to the class. And he didn't pass the first time and then he went again and passed the second time. It's kind of a tricky test, I guess. I don't, I don't know that much about it, so.
Tony got it, surely.
We didn't mean.
I take a lot of contractors licensing tests.
Just so I can. Okay, um, so let me go back to the bill for Gary Herb.
Okay.
Okay. Somewhere along the way, I talked to Gary today, cause I hadn't heard anything, so I called, left him a voicemail yesterday. He called me back. And he said that he was told already that we were paying for the whole thing.
Oh.
And I don't know who told him that. I don't, and I said, okay, well, I didn't, I said, I haven't heard anything and I haven't seen a bill. And he said, well, I don't know. They told me you were paying for everything. So I don't know going forward. I just was like, okay, well, so I called Dewise Plumbing and left, played a message. Asking for the bill and I haven't heard back from him.
Okay.
So I touched base on that earlier today and then I talked to Gary when I was headed to a track meet and he said.
Gary, our water guy.
Our water guy and he said that he thought we were gonna split it.
That's what we've said.
But, but Gary Herb thought we were paying for the whole thing.
Yeah.
So he thought he didn't have to worry about it at all. So I don't know. So I.
Well, let's see how much.
We'll see how much it is and we can go from there, but that's the thing on that, so. Okay, you talked about that. We still need to get me some doors, Art Ciliana.
Yeah, I want doors. I have a heck of a time getting at that door.
Okay, um. Let's go to storm water because I did talk to Gary Knuckles, our water operator, when I was going to Covington earlier.
I, I talked a little bit about it.
Did you talk about the valve part?
Yeah, what he was hoping to do is do at night.
Yeah, so that's the discussion that they would shut us down at night. Um, I'm gonna look up and see if I, in my paperwork for the valves. They're trying to figure out what size they are. Um, I think that the paperwork I have on the valve location says what size they are. Um, so they can figure out what they need to replace. There are three leaking valves, but there is also a fourth broken valve. So if it comes down to money, we don't have to fix the fourth valve. It's broken in the off position, Gary said. But if we're fixing it and it would work out, then, um, we could fix all four, but yeah. So you talked about the overnight stuff. He's still waiting on B and T. Um, Mike mentioned we might have some old valves. B and T does not want to install older valves. They're a little uncomfortable with that. They would rather put a new valve in, so.
Well, Steve's stance is if they were already bought and they were not old.
Okay.
But, you know.
I mean, so I, yeah.
But they have to be made in USA to go, if we buy new.
Oh, okay.
According to the grants.
Um, but there are still finalizing numbers on the project. For payout number three, we have to wait for HWC to approve it before we can approve it, so we don't have it tonight. Um, they're still. Going back and forth on some numbers. They finished a lot earlier than they thought they were going to. So there should be some savings somewhere along the way, I would think, in labor and whatnot. Am I wrong? I don't know.
Well, that's what he was saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The construction inspection, but the only issue with that is construction inspection, that comes out with the SRF. Portion, the loan portion, so we have to make sure that the grant itself, like that Okra's okay with us using. Loan money if we have to shift. Because certain things come out of the loan and certain things come out of the grant and construction comes out of the grant.
Okay.
And engineering and legals and stuff comes out of the loan. And then we've already used our personal match, our town match, which we use for engineering and things like that. So that's the other part is they have to make sure they can use that construction observation balance for that, if that's the way it works out. So you already covered that then?
Yeah.
Alright, we're good then.
And, um, they did work on Natasha's today.
They did work on Natasha's today.
They put a pipe under her driveway.
Oh, okay.
And concerned her yard, so we're gonna see how it does the next day.
They planted grass yet or anything?
No.
See, no seed yet.
They did do gym change dry. They put the first layer on central and middle. So probably the third layer will take care of, you know, central. The next time in here, we'll probably finish it off.
Okay.
That's what I can tell. So as long as Natasha and that thing is taken care of, I'm, I'm good. Ken said it was, we had that rain and branches really getting on the town, so.
Ken, did, uh, David get his fence fixed? No. Do we need to ask B and T about that? Okay.
Well, they talked about that in our meeting.
They talk about that in the meeting?
The one down.
At the end?
Yes, that they're using for an alley or something. Yes, they talked about that during the meeting, so they know that that's.
They need to fix that, okay.
Um, you might remind them, but I mean, they did talk about it during.
So this third payment, we gotta know all our numbers.
Yes, we, we cannot approve that third payout until HWC releases it and they were still going back and forth with B and T. So, because I called Christie today and said, I have cap number three.
Yeah.
And she's, so that's what I was waiting for. She's like, okay, hold on, hold on. And then she, um. Messaged me on the way to Covington that said that she had the HWC's invoice to be paid out of SRF to approve, so.
What about the extra things they were kinda tacking on and extra things?
Oh, the change orders and things like that. Um, I wasn't in that meeting. Carol would know more about the change orders. Did they talk about change orders, Cody?
Yeah, she was there too.
I was there too, but they didn't really say too much about it.
They didn't really say too much about it.
They're just kinda wandering around about it.
They were, yeah.
I think they were kinda going back and forth on some of that. I have some long emails with some. Charts of like how the budget was and some red lines and some. Where they could potentially use some money and where they were over, because they were like coming in at six twenty-four. And they're, oh, but it was six oh seven, so I don't, but they, but they told me in the beginning that they wouldn't be over. Because they had some things that they were under on.
Yeah.
So I'm not a hundred percent sure at this point in time, so.
Yeah, Steve did say that because of the length of the process, the project, that, um. There should be money left. Labor fees, inspector, observation, all of that should be.
Right.
I mean, we're talking days of paying several people.
Right, and Eric Smith has assured me multiple times that, that we're, we'll be okay. He's like, I just can't imagine we won't be okay. And he's, he's consistently said in all these emails as well, the town does not have any more money to throw at this company. We, we don't, we just can't, so that's it. And I understand they have some unforeseen things, but. I don't know, so.
Okay. Well, we'll just kinda wait on that, that bill and face that when we get to it. Is that?
That's fine with me.
But, you know, we'll have to make sure they're aware of the fence and the Maple Street. That they worked on and it's working out alright.
Okay.
And any other new business? Do I need to go now? Any more pub, any more public comments? Do we do apartments?
I have, I have one. I don't really think it's a piece of new business, but it's. No, we can talk about that at some point in time. I just wanted to present some water numbers, but, um. I, everyone knows I've been in dispute with AT&T for over a year on the phones.
Yeah.
Well, I got this email from a lady talking about our new contract and. I was like, I legitimately emailed her back and was like, yeah, since we switched trash services and I realized it was AT&T and she wasn't from Republic. Okay, so yes, Natalie's a little tired coming back. Um, but she called me today and. So in February of twenty twenty-three, I went to renew, negotiate our rates like I always do. They jacked them all up. It was gonna be. Three hundred dollars a month or something stupid for the police department, single line. It was so dumb and then my two lines were gonna be crazy. So I disputed, so they wouldn't let me just talk to a manager and change it back to the other plans. They, I had to file these disputes. Went back and forth with the dispute managers. They were supposed to credit. The dispute manager said, just pay what they quoted you every single month. I get a bill every month for the police department and it's, it's now charging like two hundred dollars a month. They did get it down. But not to where they told me it would be. It was seventy dollars a month for that single line before and our phones in here were a hundred and eighty. Now they're charging, they wanna charge me two eighty-five for the phones in here and a hundred and eighty for the single line at the police station. So this new contract lady comes in today and she calls and she goes back and I email her all the dispute stuff. And she says that the office here can have. A line for twenty-three dollars a month, okay? Because I have two lines. Each line will cost twenty-three dollars a month plus my extras, which is like call waiting. My voicemail and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So twenty-three dollars a month, but if I only maintain the single line at. The police station, it will be one hundred and eighty dollars a month. But if I wanna add a second line to the police station, I can have a twenty-three dollar line and a twenty-three dollar line. For forty-three, for forty-six dollars. So, and she said, you never have to activate that line Natalie. You can just get that line and get the discount.
So they don't see their own stupidness in front of their face.
Could we use that line into the garage at the? For their maintenance?
To call this directly?
Yeah.
We're already paying for one phone. Do you have the town phone, by the way?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Um, well, anyway, so if, I mean, I feel like I'm, they're kind of forcing my hand. We can't, I'm, we can't pay two hundred dollars a month.
You can pay forty-six dollars or you can pay a hundred and eighty.
Right. And she goes, I know this sounds dumb. But I do think that she's gotten me all my bill credit and stuff. I do have another email from her over there. So I do think she's finally handled the dispute. And it's finally gonna, I mean, I don't know how they haven't disconnected the bills. I, each bill says I owe like two thousand dollars and I've just not, I just haven't paid it.
No, we're not gonna pay.
So anyway, so I'm looking at a new AT&T contract, uh. What do you guys wanna do?
The new AT&T contract.
Well. I don't think we can give up our landlines. I feel like in, in an emergency situation.
Almost bet you what they're doing is turning your landlines into a cell device.
Well, she, we talked about it and I told her, I said, we don't have fiber optics here. We don't have, we have broadband internet, which is. Mediocre at best.
It's awful.
I know they don't wanna maintain the landlines. I understand that, but when we, like when we had that big storm, you know. We didn't have hardly any cell service. I could make calls from here and I did answer a lot of calls. I spent a lot of time in here. I could call the fuel guy for the waste water plant, like things like that. So I told her, I thought it was important that we maintain them and she said she understood. Um, and this is what she could offer us, so you guys just tell me if you want me to add a line to the police station. And we, like I said, as far as installing and activating it, I don't know if I have to do that or not, so. It's.
I mean, if it's cheaper, it's cheaper.
Yeah, so, okay. You're just gonna trust me to be cheap and handle it then? Okay, alright. Thanks.
Save money.
Just wanted to tell everybody what I was doing. Um.
We don't understand, but, yeah.
Right. So, and I will let everyone know that I did, um. I know there's some furniture camped out over in front of Morrison's house.
Right.
I did give him a call today, cause I had a complaint about it. And I thought, well, let's call Chris and tell him. And he said, oh, I moved out. I left that stuff for the townspeople.
He told me that.
Come pick it up. Who's living there?
I was walking and he told me that.
He's turned the house over. He said, a guy's been, is taking it over. He gave me a name and a phone number for the guy that's taking it over. And I, I told him, I said, you can't just leave things, Chris. You're gonna need to remove those. He goes, well, I don't live there anymore. I'm such and such. He just said he's taking over the house. And I said, well, the water's still in your name. So everything's still on your name. Well, he was supposed to switch all that. So I sent some signals his way today about those, but I do have the other guy's phone number, but I haven't called him yet. But I did do that today, cause I had somebody complain about it when they were in here and I thought, I'm just gonna call Chris and ask him why he's. And I go, you know it's rained, right, Chris? No one wants that couch.
I mean, the whole, the whole in front of the house was, the whole road was full of stuff.
Yeah.
And I seen him that day and he said, I'm going to the army.
We could at least have posted it on Facebook, so everybody could.
Yeah, so I did, I have that on my list, so I wanted to say it first, I forgot, so, okay.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. If you wanna talk about this water thing, we can do it under departments or we can do it under newer business.
It's the first department, so might as well.
Let's do departments.
Well, this is the state of water on an annual basis since two thousand seventeen. Um, I did note in here in eighteen, in two thousand eighteen. When I took over in this office, the Water Utility Operating Fund was down to a thousand dollars. It was so low that we loaned twenty five thousand from wastewater. So, over the years, we've made that back. We were supposed to repay that loan within one year. We didn't know that. So, we repaid it in twenty twenty two. But now the fund does stand at, in your fund report, you can see, I think it's about thirty five thousand dollars right now. We worked really hard to bring that up. We cut so many expenses over at that, um. At the water plant, just a phone line, an internet line, just a lot of different things. Uh, there was a lot of waste. But we are on the downside again. We're, especially with meter replacement and things like that. So, the Water Utility Operator, at the end of, this is February's funding for it. I don't have March funding statements. We stood at thirty six thousand five eighty two. I mean, that covered us in a major emergency and whatnot, but. Spending, you know, several thousand dollars a month to try to get these meters up to par and replaced.
How many more times does that?
We have put in sixty two.
We have what, three hundred more to go?
Yes, we have three hundred more to go. But they're gonna put in a few more stragglers that we have. I think we've bought seventy overall, plus the one for the school. Um, so we maybe have sixty three or, so I think she's got six or seven more assigned right now. So, we'll be up to seventy that we've put in at that point. Um. The goal was to try to do like, to buy ten a month for the warmer months. And, well, it was weather to put them in. So, we're gonna order ten more. She's gonna spec that out at the end of the week. Um. But I do, on a, Tony sent me after the council meeting, he did some research on, this is some. These are some annual bill amounts, like this is what some other towns are billing for water. He found this on the Indiana website. I've never seen this before. Um, I highlighted some populations that are close to ours, this is smaller populations. But you can see that these are billing on a five thousand monthly. We bill on twenty five hundred gallons, so. Our twenty seven, twenty nine, you would have to double that cuz this is billed on five thousand. But you can also see how old a lot of these ordinances are for some of these smaller towns. So, I don't. I know that said that was done in twenty twenty three, but I'm wondering if some of those people have updated since then. I think we're close to probably on par with some of those, but um. I just, I know we gotta start thinking about going up.
Right. We've talked about it a couple of years.
Yeah. In a major emergency, like we did do a big well service, which cost us. Seven or eight thousand dollars a few years ago. Do you remember, Cody? Were you on the council then? Carol, do you remember? That big well service we did to Ortmans, with Ortmans. I have a video of like the well and everything.
I remember that. I don't remember.
Ortmans Wells. Uh, but it, it was, I don't know, seven to ten thousand dollars. We maybe put a new pump in. Or maybe rebuilt a pump, but that was pretty hefty. We did that. Yeah, so.
So. We got away from doing the, you know, every other year, every year.
Yeah, we haven't done anything since two thousand twenty. We raised it in nineteen, then we raised it again in twenty. And then we were gonna start doing it every couple of years and then we just haven't. I think we just.
With the COVID and all that.
Yes, with COVID every, yeah, we didn't. Yeah.
Um, but don't we, do we have to have a study done or can we just?
We do not have to have a utility. We have not, we raised our rates the other two times without a rate study. I mean, a rate study is probably helpful cuz we do get some comparisons and things like that, but at the same time, Jared Hall quoted me fifteen thousand dollars. Waste water and water. I mean, fifteen thousand dollars for both utilities.
Yeah, that's.
That's a pretty good chunk, so. I just want everybody, you can take these home. We don't have to do it. It would take two meetings to do it in any way and Scott would have to do the ordinance, but. Just can think about, I, my recommendation as a clear treasurer is no less than fifteen percent. That's what Cody and I have figured when he and I sat down and worked it. Um, if you think about that for twenty seven dollars and twenty nine cents, I don't have my phone over here, but.
That being like thirty two dollars, I think.
It's not that, yeah, so.
Thirty one, thirty nine.
I was gonna say.
That's how much the water would be.
Mm-hmm, you go to thirty one, thirty nine, you're back. Yep, two dollars, ten cents. Thank you, Director. I mean, if we only go.
What is our population, do you know?
Are you stupid?
Be what we needed to keep the budget steady and not going under.
Last month, we built twelve thousand five hundred and sixty dollars in water. And so, you know, at ten percent, you're at one hundred dollars. That's enough to buy some meters, but that doesn't cover the increased costs from Duke Energy. Duke Energy's getting ready to raise their rates again. So, your increased energy costs, your increased chemical, um, salaries have gone up every single year for everybody.
See, I was thinking it was around eight hundred, but you know, that was my guess today.
You know.
I mean, how are we on collections? Are we?
You know what, we're really, we're not doing too bad. We've got, we've got about. Eight to ten frequent flyers that we gotta tag all the time. I mean, Andrea, though, while I was gone, she negotiated payment agreements with four of our frequent flyers. She's got some people on some payment plans. She did a really good job. Um. And, yeah, she's really kicked it into gear. She and I both, you know, I'll make calls some days, she'll make calls. And I just, we just don't take. We've been kinda not nice lately.
When do they read meters?
They read on the twenty fourth. We try to read the twenty fourth to the twenty fourth. If it falls on a weekend, we try to read the shorter cycle instead of the increased cycle. You know what I mean? So, I think they read.
They read.
Okay, so they read, they read on the twenty fifth. Cuz the twenty fourth was a Sunday, so they read on Monday, the twenty fifth, so. The next time, they'll read on a Wednesday to get back to the twenty fourth. I, that's just the cycle that I inherited it when I got here, so. Um. And they did, they are still manually reading. I mean, even though we've replaced sixty two or sixty three meters, they're still manually reading about thirty to forty. But they have replaced most of the meters out in the country and in the really difficult places to read. I mean, here in town, it's not as big of a deal, but out there, you're searching through, you know. So, they have, she kinda was very strategic about it, so.
She's been doing a good job.
Mm-hmm, yeah, she's been doing great. So, there's just my two cents of my thoughts, but it's really up to you guys. And I can provide you with different information, like. I can provide you with month to month billing information. I don't know what everyone needs. I don't, I don't know.
So, why don't we, you know, think about it and try to vote on some kinda increase next time? Cuz we've, we've let this go three years now without doing anything.
Twenty twenty.
Well, I don't think we necessarily needed to raise in twenty one or twenty, you know what I mean? But then. Coming off COVID, coming off like the no ability to shut off utilities there for a while and some things like that, it wasn't really the time to raise that stuff. So. We actually sold a lot of water during COVID cuz people were home all day. So.
So, I think we, you know, not put it off any longer. It's my feeling. If it's seventeen, then it's seventeen. Keep us, you know, in the black.
Right.
Seventeen percent?
Fifteen was, I think, what we had.
Cody and I did some pretty good math on it one day.
We said, and. The amount that it goes down in a year, we went through and like. Just doing the math and then doing the, how many meters we were gonna be replacing and everything, like. I think it ended up being like seventeen point five percent that would cover. Everything without us dipping into the black or into the red ever. Um, and keep us, you know, just steady and never dipping below that fund.
Well, and I have been putting money into the water. We talked about this on the meeting. The water, um. Improvement fund, I've been putting five hundred dollars a month in that to kinda build that up too, cuz that's a good emergency fund. Um, I did not put five hundred dollars in March over because we weren't in the profitable range. We were under, so I didn't think I should transfer money when we didn't make, you know what I mean? Cuz we were in the, we were in the red.
Seventeen and a half percent gets you thirty two oh seven.
Yeah, and I think we ended up it being like, I remembered being like right there at the thirty two mark was. Where we thought that it was like, okay, that puts it at something that is. You know, it's, that's it, it's an extra dollar, but it's.
Carol raised theirs quite a bit a year or so ago, didn't they? Um, but they hadn't done it for a while either.
Yeah.
Fun, it's just a simple fact. I mean.
Yeah.
Gas is raised significantly. Energy in general is raised significantly, like. Those things are costing us to run the water plant life.
So, is that what you do with your quote unquote profit? Put it into like the water improvement fund?
Yeah, that's what I've been doing is, we were so far in the hole when I started that we really had to build it back up. I mean. If we hadn't loaned water, if we hadn't loaned money from wastewater, we would've been really named it.
Where else do you have the discretion to put that?
Um, just into improvements particularly. I mean.
In any utility or?
No, just in the water utility. You don't cross over, but we use, we pay out of our water utilities. I mean, we pay a third of Mike's salary. We pay part of Mike's salary, part of Cliff's, part of Andrea's. Gary, our water operator's salaries. Um, we have service contracts on the water tower, on the generators. Like tons of monthly expenses on that. And a lot of those, we've been able to reduce over the years. Some of that stuff we were paying for, we, we just eliminated. But chemicals have gone up quite a bit. Um. But the meters, it's really all about the meter installation because we really do have to replace those. So, run some numbers, more thoughts? Just, I wanted to give you guys some info from my software, so.
So, what was our?
Oh, no, you have it still. I did see it on Tony's today. I can give it to Tony if you wanna do it. Okay. Tony, you have to give the water report. So, you can just, we did, that's how many penalties we assessed last month.
Okay, the water report. Looks like eighty penalty.
Yes, and we did not do any tags. Um, she made phone calls last month and she negotiated payment plans with people.
And you're shut off?
No shut offs. We really try to avoid shutting off. And to my knowledge, there's no issues at the water or the wastewater plant, Tony. Um.
Other than the furnace?
Other than the furnace is still out, but now it's warm, so Gary wasn't super concerned about that anyway.
We gave him a little heater to plug in. The chlorine guy was there and he was freezing, so. Andrew said, we got a little heater back here, so I gotta wait for it.
But no, I don't think there's any issues right now. Gary didn't say anything on the phone, so, yeah. And I haven't heard from Rob, so.
There's no air conditioning out there, is there?
I don't think so. That's the other thing, and I don't wanna harp on it for too long, but we actually do need to make a few improvements. Like, the whole way that the water tower freezes every year, we really do need to contemplate a better system. The light bulb in the pit to keep it from freezing every single year it freezes. It's, it's a really poor design and if we did have some money, they, they talked about how it really just needs a little structure over it. And most places have a structure. I don't know why we don't. We just have a pit and it's every year. And you know what? I'm gonna forward Tony's phone number to Gary, so Gary can call Tony and say, the tower is frozen.
I've been trying to get ahold of Gary, but I haven't been able to. So, I, I have his phone number.
The other thing is, Gary did say that when they, if they shut down in the evening, it would not affect the hill. They would, they would maintain water up there, okay. Yeah.
And the water tower wouldn't drain or anything like that.
Right.
The school, it could not lose all their water and all that. Yeah, it sounded like a good plan.
Yeah.
If they'll go along with it.
Yeah. Okay, that's all.
Alright, street.
Ah, we, we discussed everything that I'm aware of anyways.
Fire on the park.
Well, we have a new swing back there on the table to put in the swing set and finish that out. And when I drove through this evening, we had multiple children out in the park, busy, busy places.
Ball game going on over there a while ago.
Quite a ball game going on over there.
Last night, there was a lot of kids in there.
And not tearing up the little swing set there, leaving it alone now.
Four on four ball game going on over there a while ago.
Yeah, it's pretty busy.
Last night, there was probably a dozen or more out there. I was like, oh. More kids out seated the park a long time.
Yesterday, the trail parking lot was completely full. There were people that walked out on the trail and watched the eclipse.
There was a lot of people sitting in their lawn chairs waiting on the eclipse in the day.
It was a busy place and it was busy, the park was busy this evening, so I'm happy. Happy they're out there, cuz they're not everywhere else. They're there.
Okay, we're gonna go on fire. Fire, we had one structure. One fire line, one meagre'd, two medical vehicle accidents, and then five medical, total of ten runs.
Cemetery, one burial, three graves sold. Police.
One ticket, one arrest.
And so we start on properties, our favorite subject. We talked about the new ordinance and how. You know, we haven't really got. We haven't absorbed it, so we're real like, Gary, I'm not giving Scott.
Scott, yeah, we can let him do that.
You know. Uh, I drove around today. It's same.
Yeah. On the West Street has, we've heard anything on, cuz. I'm surprised she hasn't complained again, cause there ain't nothing changed really.
The one on Central? Next to Kim? They cleaned up, they've cleaned up some of that. It don't look.
Well, I know the trash cans still overflowing over there.
They took that trailer out of there that had all that crap on it. They took that out of there.
Oh, down here?
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about the one on Central.
Stuff's all still there in there?
Uh, I think it might still be sitting around behind the house.
The yard does look emptier than it was before.
Yeah, Kim was the one that complained about.
Complained about these houses through here. I just wanna say the house that I'm mostly concerned about right now is George Fields' old house, this blue house over here.
Yeah, and I don't know what we're gonna do there. I don't know, I don't know what you do there.
I don't know either. I'm gonna see what I can find out. I'm gonna do some digging, but like the fence is starting to come apart and I, I walked down the alley today. To make sure the furniture was still out there before I called Chris Morrison and I noticed how bad it started.
I know he had some stepkids, but I don't know if he's got any kids of his own.
I'm not sure.
I don't know if he's got any family.
I know Sarah's from the gas station, so some people have been in and out of there a little bit, but I don't know if there's been anybody for a while, so.
Yeah, I haven't seen, I, last time I saw his girlfriend over there. Was a week or two after they buried him. Then she took his car and. I really haven't seen anybody.
That's just, that's a, because it's right there.
That and it's vacant.
Yes, I know.
Speaking of vacant, have we heard anything more on Elsie's house?
No, last I talked to that attorney's office, um, I gave them some information and they had found some heirs. And they had a plan in motion. They were supposed to let me know what they were doing and I haven't heard from them for a while. I can talk, I can shoot.
Somebody was mowing there.
Oh, it was Joe, was it Joe? Yeah, Condor has Joe Huxford mow it, so, yeah.
Is he paying any stuff?
Somebody has to pay him. I think that Mr. Condor must pay him. So.
So he's still.
Somebody's keeping the property tax up too, I think, aren't they?
Yeah, the property taxes were all paid on it. Last I talked to the attorney too.
Yeah.
So. That attorney is a really nice guy and he just was kind of fit to be tied over this whole thing, so. Anyway, but yeah.
So the South End properties have not improved at all. And even there's another car on top of a trailer down there.
Which one?
At end of the map street at Williams's, there's a, by the garage, there's a.
Don't we have a?
Partial car on top of a trailer.
They've been given a letter and affidavit and I, I don't know what. Call, time to get Scott involved.
I think it is.
Last they told me when I was down there last time was Dick was gonna try to, they were probably, Dick was going to a VA hospital and. At that point, they were gonna start cleaning up. And I said, well, we're past that point.
And the other one on Low Lane is just.
Yep, they've had a couple of letters and an affidavit, it's been talked to. The last time I talked to her, all she wanted to do was complain about everybody else around her. I mean, there's only, there's only so much I can go do when I go talk to these people or when I, when I serve them a. You know, when I serve them an affidavit. We have Scott go through that ordinance. And he wants to set it up where there's. Particular things we can find for her. And then we get a new ordinance, get a new ordinance and get a new affidavit, then we can start doing that.
Sounds good.
Kids can come, people can, I mean.
There were a couple cars I tagged that did get towed.
Yes.
Or got removed. I don't know if they got towed or not. I don't know who moved them, but they got moved.
So cleanup day is May fourth, that's the plan. I'll double check on dumpsters. I'll text Casey tomorrow.
May the fourth be with you.
Nine to, nine to one has been our typical, yeah. Oh, Sarah Osmond's getting married that day.
We got a guy, well, actually we got two guys living in town that work for Republic and one of them's a boss. That's our inside connection.
Anything else where we could give your report?
So for my report, I was gone for ten days and the world didn't fall apart. Um, Andrea was stellar assistant and actually it was kind of a slow time of the month, so it really wasn't too bad. Really have anything new that I'm working on? Just kinda trying to get this project wrapped up. I've been in contact with Christie quite a bit, Eric Smith, engineering team. Um, I will say that, oh, the community input session that we had, the community foundation sent us a one hundred dollar check for hosting that.
Oh, well, that's not.
I just put that into town donations, so. And. I think that's all tonight.
Did they come up with any?
I don't know. I haven't heard.
That was the buddy that, that we got out of it. Everything else goes to Rockville. He'll get a hundred dollars. You're welcome.
That's fair, Cody.
I mean, let's be honest.
But, uh, no, I haven't, I haven't followed up. I have like so much stuff in my inbox. I'm still catching up from that.
Before we wrap up, one more thing. On properties, can you go ahead and go around like? Hit the ones one more time with an affidavit with a like ten day cleanup or whatever. That way. We've got it in writing, so we can get it to Scott and that way we're just done with it.
I'd say that we have cleanup day and then. You know, hopefully they'll.
Yeah, if, if after the fourth stuff isn't taken care of, then we can. Go forward and. It's out of our hands.
What's the affidavit even say? I mean, just tells them they're in violation of letting trees grow, grass grow, junk laying around. Um, oh, like the one house has got an old camper trailer parked there that's got windows knocked out of it. It's been there. Pallets laying in yards. Miscellaneous household items laying all over their yards. There's, it's a two page document. It's got a bunch of different checkboxes. Talks about property values of your neighbors, you know, letting your stuff get in disarray. Which is different than the vehicle ordinance that. We tag vehicles on.
Yeah.
Look, yeah, your last two tags were good. Those both will feel because you're gone. I don't have anything else.
Oh, for like the vehicle ordinance?
Oh, you got public comment?
What kind of stuff can we bring to the dumpster, Natalie?
So typically what we've done for dumpster stuff is we, we don't want like paint, we don't want paint in the dumpsters. Or we don't want TVs in the dumpsters and we typically wanna concentrate on things that are outside.
No car batteries.
Yeah, no batteries or anything like that.
No batteries, paint.
No tires.
No tires.
We, we oftentimes, I mean, we're not saying we're gonna turn down stuff from inside, but we do like to focus on stuff that's outside. That's, you know, people have, it's hard to get rid of things sometimes that are oversized. And you can't just put them by the curb like you did over on Central Street.
You can.
And, and I thought, I just called and asked if he had a pickup schedule for it or something, but, um. So that's typically what we take, is what we try to take is things that are exterior, so. But some people often have things that are exterior that should've been interior, so we take those too.
Will you strictly limit this to residents of Rosedale?
It is residents of Rosedale, yeah. And we typically know everybody and I've asked people for identification before.
And that's consistent with what other?
Yeah, I mean. The problem with cleanup day is you'll never have enough dumpster space, no matter how many you get. And you can drive by at night and you can say the dumpsters are closed and people will continue to dump. All the things that you don't want, um, but the intent is always good. And you do help some people out, especially older people that have trouble and they don't have as many resources, but your frequent flyers. Are the last to participate.
Yeah, you can literally call them and say, hey, so. There's three dumpsters out here.
But we have called people and we have gone and picked stuff up and we have, we have done pickups and. We have really, really tried to be as accommodating as we can to help people understand that. Pride is contagious. If we take pride in the town, we want people to take pride in their properties. If your neighbor is taking pride, we want that to just be contagious. And flow over to you as well, so.
And. Just another thing, when, if, say, when this. New person takes over the house there.
Uh, did the concert go well?
We've had two or three in the last like three weeks.
I think, I don't know if you can incorporate that into that, but I don't know how you. I don't know how you cross reference trash service, like, I mean, I don't know how you, if we don't provide townwide trash service, I don't know how an ordinance requiring you to have it. How would they, would they have to prove to us they have it? You know, because there's some people that share trash service, that it's just, you know, oh, such and such shares with their grandma because their grandma doesn't have a lot of trash.
The tavern or use the dumpster.
I mean, I have a, Justin and I have a sizable dumpster over at our barn and a couple of our tenants go and use that, so they don't actually have trash service. So I don't, I don't know if we can actually do that without providing trash service. There's a lot of municipalities that provide trash service and they just stick it on the utility bill.
I mean, Terre Haute, it's, it's part of their water bill.
And to be honest, I think townwide trash service would be amazing and while there are some things about Republic that get on my nerves. Having Republic buy out Wallace Brothers, that means we have a truck in town one day a week. We have trash cans out one day a week because almost everyone is using them. I know people are still using Allen's too. But Jax is out of business. He's not Wallace, or he was purchased, bought out by Wallace Brothers and Wallace Brothers bought, was bought out by Republic. But, so I do like that. I think that that's nice that we only have that less of the trash truck traffic. It's good for our roads.
Maybe that's something we, we contact them and say, hey, give us a good rate on.
They would bid it. They would love to bid it and they would bid it, they would bid it and they would give you dumpsters for cleanup day. They would perhaps offer some recycling if they could. There's a lot of possibilities with providing trash service.
We've tried this a couple times in the past and it goes down like a lead balloon.
It does go down like, it does go down like a lead balloon. Ken's not wrong. I see all the positives in it.
Oh, yeah.
But yeah, people freak out about it, even though.
Just giving you a heads up.
Even though they would, many people would probably get a better rate. Because if they're doing the whole town, they can offer a better rate, but it, it is a lead balloon. Ken is not wrong. They do not.
You get some fur flying in.
Yeah, it is a.
Well, I think a lot of people burn their trash.
Well, I think so many, a lot of them, so many stuck in their ways and.
Every time it was a nice day, my neighbors are all burning.
Who's burning trash?
I don't know, wood, trash, leaves, something they're burning.
Um, but yeah, I've always been a proponent of tr- trash service because like I said, one trash truck, one day a week.
Back at that time, we had that, I mean, I even used a guy that had that seventy eight truck with plywood sides on it. I mean, that's when. I just remember those meetings. He finally left town, but you know, but I'm just saying, we proposed that, what she's talking about and it's.
We did have a lot of negativity and.
And just be prepared on that.
And at the time, the court treasurer, she didn't, she felt like that was a, she was worried that if you didn't pay your water bill and you didn't pay that bill at the same time, like. She, and, but there's gotta be ways with that, those contracts and how that works. So I don't know, but they, there would be companies that would bid it. Republic would probably definitely bid it, so. I don't know.
And by all means, I'm not trying to be the negative nanny. I'm just.
No, you're, no, you're being real because I know Ken, I was there too, so.
Well, you know, my mom and I used to share trash service too, so I know how that.
Well, it's like me and my boy, he brings all this crap to me.
Yeah, Griffin brings all his trash out here. Yeah, and probably three of my tenants do, so, yeah.
Probably happens a lot.
So how would it be negative? To me, it's looking to be a good idea.
I, I think people just like choice.
And I think the, the choice, but also the additional cost where you're making them pay for something versus, I think that was a big part of it.
Because if they don't have trash service now, if they are sharing, then they would be forced to pay for it and then you, you do get into some negativity there.
Cheaper than what they, yeah.
And you're seeing, and you're seeing the big picture of it in that way too.
When I lived on nineteen, it was built into. My water and it, I wanna say it was like nineteen dollars a month, super cheap. Lot better than sixty.
When I was a kid and lived in Terre Haute, we always just had trash service and it was just a part of your, I think it was a part of your property taxes then.
Yeah, and my.
But I don't know how it works now, but yeah, it was just something they provided. The whole trash service choice, I didn't know anything about that till I moved here. I was like, what? So, yeah. But yes, Cheryl, I, I, I'm with you. So.
Motion to pay bills.
I will make a motion to pay bills.
I will second.
How many houses in the town? That's a gift.
Well, I have five dumpsters, six dumpsters.
What, they have dumpsters instead of trash for those?
Well, I mean, like businesses and stuff. Or would they be on their own?
Yeah, I think that they would do that on their own, so I don't know. Okay, what do you have motion to adjourn?
No, yeah.
Well, maybe I'll have some numbers next month and. See.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.